Good morning, everyone. I call to order the April ninth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting at nine A M. We are meeting in the San Mateo County Board of Ch- Hall Chambers as well as in Zoom. Please rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with the roll call.
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson is absent. Commissioner Ketchum is absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
Ah, here.
And Chair Serrano Juan?
Here.
Thank you. Have a quorum. And staff is represented by Fox, Monowitz, and Gonzalez. Thank you.
We will now open public comment for items on consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I will first call on members in chambers, followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the back of the room. On Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, we have no comments for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for items not on the agenda and consent agenda. Do we have a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta, a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Serrano Juan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
We will now move on to item two. Madam Clerk, please introduce the project and the planner.
Informational presentation of the long-range planning projects the department is prioritizing for twenty twenty five, presented by Planning Services Manager, Bharat Singh.
President Serrano Juan. I, uh, first of all, I'd say that we are a little late in the year to bring this to you, but we were, uh, a bit busy with our housing element and trying to get that all squared off. So, uh, apologies for that, but, uh, without further ado, I will start with our, my presentation, so. Which way do I point to get this thing to work? Alright. So as you've seen in your packet, there is a detailed, uh, there's a, uh, work plan summary and a detailed work plan outlined, um, in attachment B. Uh, all the projects and programs are organized by, uh, the following categories. Uh, state mandated policy updates, uh, ordinance and regulation updates, community plans and studies, transportation plans and studies. And then for this year, we've added some, um, projects that we are doing which are operational in nature. And again, uh, projects are prioritized based on schedule and availability of staff. So, uh, as you can see, the summary chart, uh, that you have in front of you is organized in the same fashion. Uh, a few things that are different, uh, are, uh, the projects in green are essentially associated with each other which are housing-related. And I just did that so i- it, it's a visual cue of what we are doing with relations to housing because they, it overlaps different parts of, uh, this chart. The other thing that we've added is obviously the, the section in the bottom which is the, uh, organizational projects and, and roles that, uh, long-range planning staff and planning staff has, uh, during the year. So this gives you a bit bigger picture in terms of our, uh, workload and for the year. And moving on, uh, we had, for this year, we started, we tried to, uh, highlight all the projects with terms, in terms of geography. And this was primarily done to, uh, show, you know, where the county is focused on for the next, uh, couple of years. As you can see, a majority of the projects are, um, in the, on, uh, related to the coast side or our countywide. While, uh, bay side, we really don't have any specific projects. Till last year, we had, uh, the North Fair Oaks, uh, uh, project that we were doing. But this year, it's pretty much only countywide projects, um, and then maybe some specific state laws that may be only applicable, uh, on the bay side. For example, A B two zero nine seven, which is a transit, uh, related parking requirement, uh, law that because we don't have high-capacity transit on the bay side, it'd only be applicable, uh, on the coast side, it'll be only applicable on the, on the bay side. But as you can see, you know, on the coast side, we have, uh, Plan Princeton. We have the South County Housing Study for Pescadero, uh, S R one, uh, safety improvements, the multimodal, uh, parallel trail gap closure, uh, for Carlo Street. And then, uh, we are, we've already embarked on the L C P amendment for the farmworker housing. So I'm just going to go through each of these, uh, sections really quickly. And if you have any questions, I'll, at the end of the presentation or during the presentation, please do ask. So starting with the state mandated, uh, mandated requirements. Uh, I'm very happy to announce, and you, you've probably already heard this, H C D has, uh, found that our revised housing element, uh, has met the statutory requirements. Uh, we are in the process of hiring consultants to do the rezoning, uh, so we should have that sorted out by the end of the month. Uh, the rezoning is expected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty six. That would include, um, the C Q A requirements, um, and, uh, getting Coastal Commission, uh, uh, sending the information to the Coastal Commission. We just don't know how long the Coastal Commission would take, but, but we are, uh, geared towards trying to get this thing done, uh, by the end of twenty twenty six. Sure.
In terms of who you hire and what their, what their role and responsibilities, I'm just curious as to the sites have already been identified for rezoning?
Mm-hmm.
So what, what are they actually doing?
So the consultants essentially will be working towards, uh, figuring out all our existing policies and where changes would be made. So primarily in, in the, in the land use rezoning part of it, they're going to upzone those areas as mentioned in the housing elements, the sites that we've selected. But what that would mean is, for example, in Colma, we have a very old specific plan. They would look into the specific plan and see if there are any conflicts that would arise due to this. They would make those changes. And those would primarily be on development standards because if you're upzoning, uh, obviously you have to look at the development standards, see if that capacity is actually, you know, buildable or not based on our standards. So they would have to look at all of that and rework all of that. There's also an outreach component that is a requirement which they will also, uh, you know, help assist us on. And then lastly, C Q A, uh, is also part of the, uh, scope of work for them. So they would be going through the C Q A, uh, aspects of it.
So it sounds like, uh, technical legal issues.
Yes, essentially, uh, whatever technical and, uh, legal requirements are to rezone, that's what they are assisting us with, along with, uh, some of the outreach that would be needed as part of, uh.
And the budget comes from our budget? It's not, it doesn't come from H C D, right?
It's, it's our budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to the safety element and the environmental justice element, uh, both of these are in the outreach phase. Uh, safety element is a bit ahead. Uh, we are actually having a joint workshop with Half Moon Bay on April twenty eighth where, uh, they, we will be discussing, uh, draft policies for the safety element. Uh, for the E J element, there are community surveys underway, um, utilizing existing events and gathering locations, I did, you know, in identified communities. Uh, I should mention, we are having some challenges with some communities, particularly those that, um, are immigrant communities that they, uh, are a bit reluctant to take the survey with, with the environment that we're in. But we're trying to figure out alternative ways to get the information that we need. And then lastly, uh, there is a state requirement, um, state law fourteen twenty five that requires the county to review and update its open space, uh, element, um, by January of twenty twenty six. Uh, it, uh, the state law requires us to, uh, incorporate any findings out of the E J element into the open space element. So, uh, county, uh, the planning staff has worked with, uh, sustainability and parks to see what our open space element actually says and what the law says and are be, what is missing. It turns out, the good news is that it turns out not much is missing. Uh, so we, we may not need to do a full-on update for the open space element, but, uh, essentially, uh, take what's in the climate change element and the open space element and sort of highlight those that, you know, these are the things that the E J element, uh, will be relying on. These policies would, the E J element would be relying on to fulfill the requirements of the E J element from access to open space, um, requirements. So moving to community plans, um, and studies, as I mentioned, uh, Plan Princeton and the, uh, Pescadero Workforce Housing Analysis is underway. Uh, uh, are, we had a participatory workshop on sea level rise, uh, last September at Princeton, which was very well received. And we are, uh, working right now to develop, uh, development standards and other policies that would, uh, facilitate, um, how to deal with sea level rise in the community. And we are hoping to wrap everything up by the end of the year. So there will be a few, um, uh, conversations with the community this summer on the development standards that we are looking at. Um, on the Pescadero Workforce Housing Opportunity Analysis, we hired Opticos Consultants in late twenty twenty four, uh, to assess select opportunity sites for housing and tourism-related, um, commercial use. The study's goal is to inform the county and the community, uh, of the development potential, potential and challenges, um, in Pescadero which that are significant. And, uh, the study, uh, is in its, uh, sort of last phases. So it should be wrapped up by the summer and depending on the findings, uh, we will take the next steps to make that, all of that public, um, after that's been completed. And I just wanted to mention, we, last year, we completed the ten-year review of the community, N F O Community Plan. They were, uh, in front of you and then at the board, uh, earlier this year. And that has been, uh, quite, uh, successful. Uh, I think some of the findings that have come out of it is, has been very helpful for us. And we will be looking forward to, uh, the recommendations from that study, uh, in our, at a later date, uh, in our work plan. Moving on to transportation plans and studies, this is the bulk of, uh, our, um, spreadsheet that we had, uh, shared. Uh, just to highlight a few important ones, uh, obviously Moss Beach Congestion Safety, uh, Project. The project in its, it's in its, uh, project approval and environmental phase with the S M C T A. Uh, it started last summer and it, it's anticipated to continue and go through till, um, uh, the fall of twenty twenty six. Uh, there will be a significant public engagement with regards to this project later in the year, uh, somewhere around, uh, in the fall. The Get There Together Plan, the Transportation Demand, Demand Management Plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors earlier this year. Uh, again, there are several recommendations out of that, uh, plan that we are looking to try and start to implement. Again, the, the issue here is trying to find the resources to implement that. So our staff will be looking at, uh, what are, what grants and, and other opportunities are out there to try and start to implement some of the, uh, recommendations from this plan. And then lastly, the, uh, Pallet Trail Gap Closure Study for Carlo Street, uh, we had a, we had gotten a grant, uh, from, uh, A B A G, uh, M T C, and that draft study is complete. Uh, we are trying to look at what are the alternatives, uh, from that, uh, study and what can be, be done in terms of implementing the recommendations from that study. Again, that probably will come in front of you either later this year or early, uh, next year. And then, uh, we have ordinances and regulations that are, uh, there is almost a never-ending list of ordinances that come out with regards to housing. And we are looking at that as a combined current planning and long-range planning staff. Uh, look at that, uh, uh, are looking at those and trying to update our, uh, uh, either our regulations or, or procedures, uh, based on that. Um, right now, the signi- most significant one is the, uh, Objective Development Standards, um, which we are, uh, revamping for the entire county. And the idea here is to remove as much subjectivity that is there in our ordinances to make it much more straightforward and streamlined for housing development. And then we are working on, as I mentioned, the L C P Amendment for the Farmworker Housing. Um, we will, uh, we are looking to add a farmworker housing exemption to the L C P to facilitate, uh, farmworker housing, uh, being built on the coast side. Uh, you will see some of the results of that later in the year. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, uh, the tree ordinance that was approved last year. It's been submitted to the Coastal Commission. They have asked for some additional information that we are providing to them. So we are hopeful to get that, uh, uh, approved and, and certified by the Coastal Commission, uh, sometime in the summer. So with that, uh, I'll bring, uh, to something that is new from last time, uh, which are the operational projects. So here are the four, uh, significant ones. Uh, first one is developing this C T C Transportation Projects Mapper Tool. So, uh, Chanda Singh has been working very diligently with our G I S staff to create this online tool that, uh, will, uh, have all projects that are related to the Connect the Coast Side, uh, Plan displayed, uh, online. And what the intent of this is to, uh, I think the, the C T C when it was completed had a, uh, requirement to annually provide updates on the project. So this is in response to that, to have this mapping available. So that's the general public and staff can look at this and say which are the projects that are out there, what is, what's happening with each project and what is their status of these projects. And you can get them, uh, from this tool. So we are hopeful that by the summer, this will be up and operational. Uh, we are in pretty much the final stages of, of working this. We'll have it, uh, internally tested, uh, between now and the summer. And hopefully by the summer, it should be, uh, released. The second thing that we are working on is the Do I Need, uh, a Tree Permit Tool? This is already operational and this comes out of the tree ordinance. So the, the guidance, uh, website that we have, sanmateocountytrees.org has these, this button and this tool that says, Do I Need a Permit? And what this does is it sequentially walks a person through what they need to do with their, uh, tree. And it lets them know, uh, through a series of questions that would, do they need a permit or not? And what this will do is it will help, hopefully help, uh, folks to understand if, um, they need to come in or not, or what are the requirements in terms of species and all of that. So this, hopefully the stream sign, uh, streamlines things much better and would reduce the complaints that we have or any of the violations that we see. So we are hoping, uh, that this would work, um, in that fashion. We will probably take a stock of how's, you know, how it's done about, at the end of the year. And if it is actually, uh, benefiting folks, uh, then we can try and see how we can, um, add a similar kind of tool for other permitting processes. Again, it would be gradual.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to mention that I think that's a, a really great idea, especially if we have it for several other things that, that the public may be looking for in permits in general.
Yes, so, yeah, thanks. The question being, this, we had the funds for it. We'd have to figure out the funds for that, uh, as we evaluate this. So at the end of the year, our goal is to evaluate how successful it is. And if it is, then we will, uh, you know, petition the county that.
Expand it to more, okay.
Yeah, to, to build something similar for some other, uh, more frequent, um, and more controversial, uh, permits. So, uh, in my mind, I'm thinking maybe the A D U one would be something that we would look at.
Right, A D U is, uh, another one, uh.
Yeah, or just looking up, you know, permits in general. I mean, as, uh, you know, just to check on, uh, if your neighbor is building something and you're not sure they pulled out a permit. If you could look, go and look, because it's not an easy way to do it right now.
Yeah, and that, uh, the previous tool that I mentioned, the Trans Project Mapper, for C T C, that would be something that we could then look at if it's, again, if it's successful and we figured out a mechanism of, uh, updating that information. We could then look at, uh, basically having a mapping of, of permits in general. But that's, you know, a bit further out, we have to first get these up and running and making sure that we have a mechanism that they, uh, you know, are maintained properly and are worked through.
Sounds good. Thanks.
So the other two in here, uh, the setting up of the drought working group, we've received some funds from the state to set up a, a drought workforce. Um, we are, um, working on that through the safety element. Uh, we have, uh, advertised, uh, it to different, uh, county agencies, uh, to come and join the task force. So hopefully that will, um, materialize, uh, early next month. Then we'll have the first task force meeting. And this is essentially to set up a working group to, uh, ensure that if the counties does suffer, you know, a bout of drought, there are, um, mechanisms in place to respond to that. So, uh, it's an ongoing effort, uh, and once the safety element is done, it'll continue after the safety element, uh, is completed. And then lastly, uh, we have been working on, uh, the housing permit data dashboard. Again, this is, annually, we report this to, uh, H C D and it's a big spreadsheet that we do every year. So we are thinking of utilizing that same, and, you know, process that we do every year and try and provide that, uh, to the public on a more consumable, uh, fashion. So that's something that we are working on. But again, this is lower in priority. The first two are the ones that we are trying to make sure that we have up and running, uh, by the middle of summer. So with that, uh, I come to the end. Uh, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions for, any further questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
I do have a, just a question about all you guys, um, a resource for doing all these. I see twenty-four items here on the attachment A, Long Range Summary Work Plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just wanted to make sure you guys have, um, adequate staffing and financial resources.
Let me take that first. Alright, um. I like to call our long-range planning team small but mighty. Um, they get a lot done with, uh, limited resources. Um, we have had, uh, a number of discussions with the County Executive Office and the Budget Office about, uh, the budget plan for the next two years. That will be going to the board in June and then subsequently amended in September. And, um, the county is facing some difficult economic times. And so we are, uh, working with the C E O and the Budget Office to obtain sufficient funding for the projects that Bharat mentioned, but also recognizing that the can't, county at this point can't afford to do everything that we want. So, um, I anticipate it's going to be a challenging two years ahead in terms of having sufficient funds and resources to accomplish everything that we've set forward to accomplish. Um, but we are committed to, um, doing our best to securing those resources and funds as necessary to complete these priority projects. Um, but there's no guarantees at this point.
Yeah, in that case, um, how do you prioritize, um, the items state mandated or?
Yes, um, it's, uh, ongoing discussion. Um, whether or not something is mandated or discretionary certainly plays into those decisions and prioritizations. I've been through these exercises before and I can tell you that when you look at the list of things that we do that are, may not be mandated, they're very important. They might not be required by law, but they are critical to effectively serving our communities, residents, protecting our environment. And so I think there's going to be a delicate balance there. Absolutely, we need to secure the funds to complete our mandated assignments. But, um, I'm reluctant to give up on some of the other ones because of the important, um, services they provide to our community. So, um, that's why I say w- we'll be facing some challenges in the upcoming years because we can't do it all. Um, and what is going to have to fall off the plan is going to be, um, you know, carefully considered. And we'll do our best to keep the commission up to date on any changes in the plan based on budgetary constraints.
And where are you getting most of the pressure from? The state, council members, community? Do we have that kind of gauge?
Well, I think the, um, economic challenges stem from a variety of factors, uh, including things that are happening at the national level. Um, recession, if we have one, will affect all county departments, um, as will the reduction in federal funding for various programs. Because, um, our department does receive a share of the funds from the county's general fund. And if that general fund is strained due to the need to backfill for the loss of federal funds in other programs such as health, um, then we will be constrained in our ability to fund some of these programs. So I would say it's, uh, the pressure is more economic than from a particular group.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sure you guys will do, you know, uh, a good job to the best of your abilities. Um, I would say that we definitely need to be very transparent, uh, with the public. And I would say that we need to face our new realities, um, economic and political, all that stuff. And I think, um, when I say being transparent and, uh, very, uh, forthcoming, um, we should let the people know, you know, what, what the priorities are and make adjustments or put a plan together that, you know, if you, ideally, if you were to get all the money that you need and there'd be no problems getting, moving that forward, then you achieve so many goals. But if things, uh, short, falls short of that, then what are the priorities that, that we need to address accordingly, based on what we have on hand?
Yes, I agree. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. Um, there will be a lot unfolding over the course of the next few months, both with the budget adoption in June and then with the September revisions. I think once we get through the September revisions, we will have a more solid understanding of what we are able to fund and what cannot. And at that point, we will be sure to be transparent with our stakeholders and constituents about what will be moving forward and what will not.
So, um, I saw, um, many, um, names on, uh, on the, I saw many names, um, here in, in terms of resources. Um, so are, are they, are most of these resources, uh, tied up?
If you're referencing to the staff.
Mostly with this staff members, yeah?
Yes, so obviously there are some staff members that, um, so Katie, who is a staff member with Long Range Planning is on maternity leave. But what we've done is we have supplemented other current planners, uh, in her place to support me. So you will see wherever there is, uh, Katie's name, there are extra names than, that they were, that are added. Uh, so yes, most of these folks are associated with those specific projects. But anything that is long-range that Katie was managing, I'm managing them right now, uh, while she's away. And the staff that are there just to support, uh, me in, in that, in, in that role. Um, there are some projects that, um, have consultants and you'll see the name, it'll say consultants. Uh, and in that sense, that most of the consultants are doing the project management for us. So, uh, for example, in the safety element and the E J element, uh, they're doing that. Even with, uh, the smaller projects that we're doing, the, um, assessment of Pescadero, there are consultants that are involved. And then, uh, select group of current planners, um, also involved. So Canoa, you'll see his name in a couple of places. Camille, uh, is taking the lead with the, uh, Objective Design Standards because she manages the design review communities, uh, the staff that manages the design review community. So she's the best person to take that on. So those individual current planners are participating somewhere with Plan Princeton because she's been involved with that project for the longest time. So, uh, all of those folks are the ones that are actually working with, either independently or with me on projects.
Okay, okay. Uh, so that's quite a few people, uh.
Yes, so those are current planners. Uh, long-range staff is Chanda, myself, uh, Will Gibson and Katie. Long range staff is Chanda, myself, Will Gibson and Katie, Katie's on maternity leave. And so everybody else is just out there and, you know, helping us out with the stuff.
So others are kind of filling in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to expand on that for a moment. You know, I think it's really beneficial to get the participation of the current planners in the long range planning projects because once the policies and regulations are updated, it's the current planners that implement that through the permitting process. So being involved with the long range planning puts us in a better position to have policies and regulations that can be effectively implemented. Given the concerns about a recession and an economic downturn, there is the possibility that we will have a reduction in permit volume. And if that is the case, we will take advantage of any extra time the current planners have available to assist with carrying out the long range projects you've heard about today. I'd also note that many of these long range projects require the participation of other departments within the county.
Yeah.
And so, you know, part of our budgeting process is to ensure that we have adequate funds to support their participation in these planning efforts. And so that's something that we have definitely kept in mind as we submitted our budget proposals.
And they may be impacted too, depending upon their budgets.
Which is why we feel like now is an important time for us to secure funds for their participation. So if their budgets are impacted, they have alternative sources of funds to support their participation.
Okay. So the, I also see priorities mentioned on these projects. So currently to the best of your ability, that's, that's the, those are the priorities on these different.
Yes.
Plans, correct?
Absolutely.
Right, okay. And, and that could change depending upon as we move forward.
That's correct. If, you know, what we consider a priority project doesn't get sufficient funding, then those priorities will change.
And, and as you mentioned, like for the, for the benefit of the community, you may have to move in that direction more than in some other direction.
Yes, I think there's going to be some difficult balancing acts that we'll need to carry out. But we will certainly get as much of this work program done as, as possible.
Okay. So, so do we expect another update coming our way in say six months' time?
Well, I will certainly keep you updated on the department's budget situation over the course of the next few months. As far as updates on the status of these projects, I will also provide, you know, status reports during my director's report. And many of these projects will be coming to you for your consideration in the near future. So you'll also be informed about their status as they move forward and they are brought to you for either informational purposes or for your endorsement.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And. And. One, like, kind of specific question that I have is. Are, are there, like, is there a overlap, say, between the goals and needs between, say, housing element and North Faroe Plan implementation?
There certainly is, and that's why in the summary I was trying to link everything that is housing together. So even though some of these are happening before the others, but we are very cognizant of the fact that what have we said in the NFO, how do we incorporate it into the housing element or what we are saying in the housing element is complementary to what we've done in NFO or in other places. So yes, we definitely make sure that all the different things that we have done before, the policy documents that we have done, how do they merge into the housing element overall? As well as if there are any updates in the housing elements, we would then go back and update those other documents as well. At this point, I don't think there are any specific documents, policy plans that need to be updated other than when we do the rezoning. Obviously, the Colma Plan is pretty old, so there'll be some updates to that. But the NFO and the housing element pretty much happened, the, the ten year review happened hands, you know, hand in hand. And some of the rezoning that happened as well. So those are all complementary and they were, they're, they're all congruent to each other at this point.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it, it appeared that we, to be, just wanted to confirm.
With the rezoning, the Colma specific plan, which is pretty old, will get some updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your questions. We will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. We have nobody wishing to speak in chambers and we do have one hand raised on Zoom from Len Erickson. Len, you will have five minutes.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Len Erickson. I'm a resident of the mid-coast in El Granada. And I have a long history of work on the project specifically regards to Highway One in the land right in front of my house, sometimes referred to as Surfers Beach, but really in effect extends from Capistrano to Coronado and further on. Caltrans had a major project, the multi-asset repair project, which was approved. I was part of an appeal team on that. And the coastal commission set forth certain expectations for what might be done there. But more concern to me in the staff report from the coastal commission, they identified the fact that Caltrans is coming up later this year, in fact, in June, to come forward with their long range plan for the highway in that area. It's recognized, recognized that in recent reports where they showed the Highway One at Surfers Beach with broad lanes for bikes, coastal trail, et cetera, it could not be done there at all without moving the highway or doing something dramatic. And so there's an expectation that in June, they will make a report on that that would be fairly detailed and leads to long range projects. In addition, the county in the current connect the coast side put forward for the multi-asset multimodal trail, an overall expectation to work on that. And this current plan deals specifically at Moss Beach, but really in the Surfers Beach area, really between Coronado and Capistrano and beyond, there's need for the trail there and the coastal commission specifically called out to Caltrans, the appellant, for the project that that they were expecting progress there. The bottom line is I have a large list of things that might be brought up there. I have reached out to staff, but not able to really connect them very well. And I plan to do that after this meeting. As basically by the time we get to June, I'll no longer be a resident of the county. I had sold my house. I remain interested and active, so between now and then, I'm trying to, both with the county and with the mid-coast commission and others, try to make sure I point all the different things that needed in response to what supervisor Steve Monowitz mentioned. These are big and expensive, Caltrans bears some of that. But there's been a real distinct lack of good coordination and communication between Caltrans and the county on some specific projects, much less these longer ones. So those are concerns I have. I hope to report back at your next meeting in terms of progress. And with that, I'll sign off.
Thank you. And with that, Chair, we have no further comments for item two.
Thank you. We will now close for public comment for item two and begin commission discussion on this item. Are there any comments from the commission? Do we need a motion for this?
No, this is an informational item. So at this point, staff would be interested in any additional feedback the commission might have on the long range work program. Certainly appreciate the comments you provided previously. So unless there's additional comments, we'd be prepared to move on to the next item.
Hey, thank you. I just have one quick comment of curiosity in terms of like a scorecard, some kind of, for the housing element. For example, we have to do X amount of units over a course of eight years. Is there a way we could on an annual or biannual basis, figure out what's in the pipeline and kind of keep track?
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad you asked that question. That was one of the matters I was going to mention in the director's report. We are required to provide an annual progress report to state HCD regarding implementation of our housing element. And that will be presented to the Board of Supervisors on May twentieth. And I'll have an opportunity to discuss that with you at our May fourteenth meeting. I can give you a kind of summary of what we'll be presenting to the board at that time. And then I think more generally, with respect to the long range work program, we will be keeping careful track of the progress that we're making for all of these efforts. And we'll be happy to keep you updated on the progress we make as they move forward.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
I think we can go ahead and close. Thank you, Barat, very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to item three, correspondence. We did receive an email addressed to the Commissioners regarding the situation at Seal Cove and expressing concern regarding the approval of development in this geologically hazardous area. There have been some concerning recent events in the Seal Cove area. There's numerous geologic hazards there, including traces of the San Gregorio Fault, a slow-moving landslide and unstable coastal bluff. In the last three to four months, we've seen an accelerated rate of movement of the landslide area that we have been tracking throughout the years. From what we can see, the rate of movement is greater than we've seen in prior years and has caused damage to some of the homes in the area. In fact, about a week and a half ago, one of the homes needed to be red-tacked because it had been damaged so substantially by the moving soils. So we are actively collaborating with the Department of Public Works as well as with the Montero Water and Sanitary District, MWSD, as they're referred to. They have infrastructure in the area of the landslide that's been damaged due to soil movement. Some of the water lines have become disconnected and they've had to take emergency action to maintain water supply to some of the residents in the area. They've done so by rerouting the damaged pipes above ground as a temporary solution. But there's quite a bit more work to do. MWSD did declare an emergency because of the movement. They've requested the county to do the same. That's something that we are considering. In the meantime, you know, we will be reaching out to property owners to identify any damage that they've experienced and to determine what, if any, action is appropriate to address that damage. I think the major concern here is that a landslide of this scope is not something that the county can bring under control. It's a natural phenomenon that is really, I think, at a scale that's beyond the ability for intervention through some sort of engineering solution. And so, you know, our primary concern is if we continue to see increased rates of movement, that we make sure the residents who are living in that area are safe and take appropriate precautions. And we'll be working with them on a case-by-case space to address those issues. We're also pursuing funding to undertake an update to a geologic evaluation of the area. Back when we developed our local coastal program in the early eighties, we had a geologic analysis of the area that identified different risk zones within the community. And based on recent events, we feel that it's, it would be in the county's interest to update that study. And I think that will help inform future actions. And so we are currently pursuing that. With regard to the concerns that additional development continues in the area, as this commission is familiar, each development proposal is evaluated on a case-by-case basis where we apply the best information that we have available. So to the degree there are pending development applications, we will continue to evaluate them based on the best information we have available, including what's happening here and now with the increased rates of movement that we're seeing. So these are difficult situations where we have to balance a property owner's right to make reasonable economic use of their property with the risks that presents to the residents and to the community. So I think that underscores the importance of looking at each of these proposed projects individually. Some sites are at much greater risks than others. And we've seen that in this area where, you know, certain properties are at extreme risk, whereas properties, you know, a few blocks down the street are, don't share the same risks. And so I think at this point, we can't make a global statement for the neighborhood that applies to every property. And so we'll be working with the individual property owners as needed to address the situation. So I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
If I may, for the Chair. I mean, I, you know, I've been here certainly long enough to have seen quite a few of those permits come before us. And I think that we have taken a very cautious approach for each individual case that came before us. And I think we have made it very clear to every homeowner who has wanted to develop one of these things that they're taking, you know, their own risk for developing there. And we have tried to mitigate the risk or the liability to, to the, to the county. Right, so we've been very assertive on letting them know that they are taking their own risk by developing in those areas. So, but moving forward, as the county assesses more this area, what would be the approach as far as condemning some of those houses in the future? If they're at an extreme risk, does that mean maybe that the, that the county now goes out there and tries to purchase some of the, those lots and try to, to take down those houses, those buildings that are in an extreme danger? What would be the, the going forward approach to try to resolve some of these issues?
I think that's a very important question that we're currently working on. I think the idea of a county buyout of the properties at risk, it's not financially feasible at this point. There may be other options that we can pursue. There have been similar areas of the California coast that have been similarly affected. Some of them have been able to obtain funds from FEMA to extinguish development. In other areas, local governments have pursued the transfer of development credits so that if a home is rendered at risk, highly at risk, that it's not left without any economic value, that the development potential from that lot. that the development potential from that lot could actually be acquired, purchased by another property that's in a safer location, who would be afforded a greater intensity of development as a result of their purchase of that development credit? These are very complicated programs that require a lot of vetting to be successful. So I think those are some of the options the county will be considering moving forward. But no decision has been made on that yet.
Okay. Well, let's see what happens. But I think the county should start thinking about, you know, trying to bring up some remedies along the way.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Have, have there been any construction that took place which have eroded? With, because the life is supposed to be, what, fifty years? Or that we know of, but that they have been eroded in less than fifty years?
Commissioner Gupta, your observation's correct. Our local coastal program policies do require setbacks from coastal bluffs that are sufficient to ensure a lifetime of fifty years for the structure. I'm not aware of any instances where we've approved a home based on a fifty-year setback where the erosion has occurred more rapidly and the house has been threatened sooner than fifty years. I think most of the homes that are at risk from the current movement are over fifty years old. I don't know that for certain, but that's my impression. But we will be studying this issue that you've raised to evaluate what's the appropriate next steps moving forward.
Right. And to follow on to Commissioner Ramirez's question, has county gone out and, like, either compensated in any manner or purchased those kind of properties from the owners?
Well, county staff has certainly been out to the site to assess the situation. In terms of compensating owners for loss of property, no, that's not something that the county has done that I'm aware of. I think Mr. Fox might want to say something about, you know, where the use of public funds is appropriate versus when it becomes a contribution to a private entity that might not be as appropriate.
I, I am not aware of anything of that nature occurring in this area. There are some other slide areas elsewhere in the county where the county has worked in cooperation with FEMA and the homeowner to leverage federal funds to purchase properties that were at risk. So there are programs that allow for that kind of thing. But as Mr. Monowitz said, it's, it's very complicated because primarily when you purchase a home, you get insurance that will protect your financial interests in that investment. And you can't just rely upon the government writing you a check for the value of your home if there's some natural casualty that occurs. So you have to kind of go through a process. And this goes through a program. It isn't really a matter of the county just kind of coming forward in individual cases and, and purchasing properties that are at risk of destruction. It really is more elaborate than that, and it usually involves some other larger public interest, like a federal program to address a slide area, for example.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. I didn't think county is responsible for a purchase that somebody makes which is not viable at the end. Right. Thank you.
This may or may not be relevant to this current discussion, but obviously we're having a homeowner insurance crisis in a state. And I don't know if these issues will be coming up in front of our, our body or we're dealing with anything pertaining to that. I just want, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I think some of the challenges with homeowners insurance is a real concern, but not necessarily one that Planning and Building gets involved with. I, I do believe that the matter will come before this commission in a variety of forms. I think first and foremost, I've been talking to Barat about how this relates to our safety element. Clearly, if we have geologic hazards in certain areas of the county that need to be taken into account when we evaluate development proposals, the safety element is a good component of the general plan to set policies for dealing with such situations. And then secondly, I would anticipate that there will be some property owners who do want to take action to try and protect their investment. And some of those proposals will require permits that may come before you. So I think that's primarily the way in which this commission will be involved in some of the related decision-making.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have other items?
Yes, moving on to item four. Our next meeting, which was scheduled for April 23rd, has been canceled due to the lack of items. So that means our next meeting will be on May 14th. Right now, we have two general plan conformity determination requests scheduled for that hearing. One is in regard to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission's planned acquisition of power infrastructure. And the second is Mid Peninsula Open Space District's proposed acquisition of a portion of the Bay City site south of Half Moon Bay. Moving on to the director's report, I'll just reiterate something that Barat mentioned. That's the Safety Element Workshop, which is a joint effort with the City of Half Moon Bay. That will be coming up on April 28th. I also wanted to note that Angela Montes sent an email to you all regarding an upcoming training opportunity from Twenty-One Elements regarding last mile transit. This is how addressing issues related to making the most of our transit systems and addressing the challenge of how you get from your transit stop to your ultimate destination. So I would encourage you to participate if you're interested. That will be on April 29th. And then the contract for the housing element rezoning, as well as our annual progress report for the housing element. Both of those items will be on the May 20th Board of Supervisors agenda. And I will summarize our staff recommendations on those items for you at the May 14th meeting. And so that concludes my director's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the Commissioners have any further questions for Steve?
So this Half Moon Bay, April 28th workshop, is that physically in Half Moon Bay? Is it also online? Is it?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Is, is the workshop also online?
This one is in person. Again, Half Moon Bay is taking the lead. Since our safety element is being done jointly with several other jurisdictions, managed through Twenty-One Elements. So there was a request that, you know, Half Moon Bay wanted to do this workshop. And a lot of the concerns with regards to safety overlap with the county. So we decided to work with them on this end. So they're, they're the lead, and for them, they wanted to do it in person. What we'll try and do is ins- ensure that we put up all the products that come out of that online. But I don't believe that there will be an online interactive purpose because it is specific to the urban coast for the county. So yeah, the, the location's going to be in, in the, in the city. I'm forgetting the name of the place that, where it's going to happen. But all that information will go out shortly. So Half Moon Bay is going to release a pu- public notice for that, I think, this week. And as, as soon as that happens, we will follow up with Unincorporated County and mail it to all the interested parties.
Okay. So could we, could we have that information sent to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. No, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff. No other further questions, we'll adjourn. Thank you.